Yeah, this is Ben Reed, Public Safety Committee. I need to make an announcement this morning and apologize, but due to some late and important information, we're going to cancel this meeting and reschedule a little later date. I appreciate all of you being here and I'm sorry for the inconvenience.
October the 12th, 2021, we're in our pre-council meeting and good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're conducting business today via teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99, AT&amp;T Universe, and the city's YouTube channel. Just a reminder for everyone that we do every week right now is that the council work session gives the council an opportunity to review items on today's agenda as well as ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. This meeting is informal and there's no official action taken. At the 11 o'clock hour, we'll have an update from the EMA Director and the Fire Chief. So let's look at our agenda for today. And we'll look at item 10. This is a resolution authorizing participation in the Senior Nutrition Program and the grant from the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. This continues the sponsorship of the program for the fiscal 2022 at Carver and Elliott Community Centers, and the amount is $115,513. Our next item is a resolution authorizing an agreement to purchase property from Bellevue Associates. This is LLC, and this is for proposed street improvement at the intersection of George Wallace Drive and the East Chestnut Street, and the amount is $23,500. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Central Alabama Crime Stoppers Program to facilitate communication with citizens to solve crimes. The amount is $10,000 per year for three years. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Gaston City Board of Education for the after-school tutoring program for children not covered by the CARES funding and the Myon Reading Program, and the amount is $182,962. And item 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Fiscal Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant, CARES Act recipients, and this is HUD funding for COVID response. It authorize agreement with Manor, Way of the Cross Ministries, the Love Center, Homeless Shelter, the Catholic Center of Concern, and the Salvation Army for $30,000 each, and the United Way for $51,249, for a total of $201,249. And our last item is an ordinance amending the Fiscal Year 2020 Action Plan and Budget for the HUD Community Development Block Grant for the Fiscal Year 2020 June Fund Budget, and this transfers fund from the CDBG budget from 2015 through 2019, and this is adding $600,000 to street improvement in the 2020 CDBG budget for a total of $1,001,000. Are there any questions or comments from the council members concerning today's agenda? So if not, we'll look at our pre-council folder and file. These are items that have been routed to the mayor and forward to the council. The first item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Aldott, B&amp;B Beverage Management, and River Rock Landing. This is in accord to a concert and special event that will be held on October the 29th on property adjacent to the campground. The next item is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donation from the Edgewall County Commission. This is for furniture valued at $2,145 to be used by the fire department. The next item is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Harrison Avenue Architectural Review Board. This appoints Craig Scott to replace Stephanie Wagner and reappoint Bunny Yarnell. We have a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement between the city's transportation department, the Edgewall County Transportation Services, and the EMA, and this relates to the use of transportation equipment and personnel in the event of a disaster. And if Mrs. Gaither is on, I'll call on her to explain.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, this is a renewal of an intergovernmental agreement that we've done in the past. To bring one time that we've used it before is, I don't know if you remember the Cook Food Incident where there were about 300 people that needed to be evacuated swiftly. If the city transportation department had needed more help, they could have contacted the county transportation department and vice versa. So we're setting the table for them to be able to be reimbursed funding if there was an event that they had to evacuate citizens from.
Are there any questions from the council members? All right. Thank you, Ms. Gaither.
Thank you.
Our next item and last item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Tyler Technologies, and this is for the police department. So I'll call on Captain Cody to explain.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Currently, our crime mapping software that we use will no longer be available to us, so we will just have to update our system. We have an upfront cost of $1,040. Our first year for this program is free, and then we will have recurring costs of $4,500 a year thereafter.
Are there any questions from the council members? Okay, well, thank you, Captain Cody. At this time, we'll have Mr. David Hooks. He has some information for the council.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a company looking to expand currently. It's a $6 million expansion, 20 new jobs at a minimum of $15 per hour. They are in the, they were a company that was recruited to the city of Gaston in 2018 by Bill Green and Frankie Davis. They're doing a great job in their expansion currently, and we'd like to offer that up as a resolution today for first reading for, to be on, be voted on next Tuesday, not today.
Okay.
We had asked for seven years abatement on the project. And the company, if any of the council members would like to tour the company anytime this week, we'll be happy to arrange for that to occur.
Okay. Where is the company located?
It is in the industrial park off of 77 behind Fair.
Any questions from the council members?
I want to receive the resolution.
This was just, this was just for, this was just for information, and this was just bringing it, just for information, not to be considered or anything like that. So if, and it has to be routed from the mayor. So, Mr. Hooks, if you'll get all that information.
It'll maybe, it's on its way currently.
Yes, I just received the information about 30 seconds ago. And I think what Mr. Hooks is likely to do is to present the information today, and I'll have it in a resolution for everybody's review in the next day. And because this company has already ordered the equipment, they'd like, you know, they'd like to bring it up next week in regular business. I know that we have an issue about new business resolutions, but that's the reason Mr. Hooks wanted to come today and present this to you so we can vote on it next week. And like I said, I got the information to do the resolution about a minute ago, and I will have it ready and write it to Ava and for y'all's review. So hopefully, I think Mr. Hooks wants it next week for this company. Am I correct, David?
Yes, Ms. Roberts. The, and I apologize for a little bit on our end for the tardiness, but the nature of this business, this is a project we've been working with this company since I've been back working on expansions, but it's really heated up the last six months. The particular product that they make, which is pretty confidential in what they're doing in their sales positions right now, and when we explain it to you, you will understand that. It has, their business has exploded, and they've expedited, and so they've ordered equipment. And the way Alabama statute reads, once they, once that equipment is delivered, it no longer qualifies for abatement. So in order for us to meet the deadlines for the company for their expansion, that's what we're competing on. And we got, we received this information literally, the request came to us literally yesterday on the timeframe. Again, it's a project we've been working on for six months, but yesterday they called and said, "We gotta go now. We've got orders that we can't fill, and we've got to have equipment to fill those orders."
Mr. Roberts, once you get that done, can we get that and have that out to the council members so they can have it to be reading on it all next week so that we won't have this thing that when we come up here, that this is the first time I saw this, or I don't know anything about this? But if we get this this evening, as far as your part, and get it out to the council members so that they can have a copy of it, so they can go over it, so they can study it, and if they have any questions that they can ask for it. This is why we're bringing it up today. I know we don't have anything in front of us, but we need to have that so that we can, we don't have, we don't need to delay. If we say we are a city of progress, and we're trying to do things, and, you know, people say that all we do is get restaurants. This is an opportunity for a business, so we don't need to let our little differences stop business from coming to the city.
Resolution's on the print right now.
Okay, all right. So that everybody can have a copy of it. And, Ms. Ava, if you would get a copy to every council person, and then on top of that, make a note and contact every council member to specifically read the resolution so it will not be anything new when we come up next week.
No, no.
Councilman Worthy?
Just for clarification, will I list the resolution on next week's agenda as a regular order of business?
Yes.
That was my question. Make sure, we're talking about it now, we're not making new business next week.
Right.
So it won't come under new business. Okay, good. That's what I wanted to make sure of. That way, we don't have to have, you know, consent to approve it.
Right.
Good, okay.
Does the council members have any further? Mr. Hooks?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm a person that puts people on the spot. So you had a, there was something that, I know it was also printed as far as the, I think it was on a track or a business?
Omni Trax.
Okay, so would you just kind of tell us about that since we can talk to you in person?
Omni Trax is the rail line system. In the old days, we called them the short line rail that runs basically from Marshall County through Edgewall County, and then loops back through Calhoun, St. Clair, into Birmingham. They're the tracks that run down Locust. There are also the tracks that service Goodyear. The company's been working on a rail system promotion for their industrial sites that have potential rail. We've worked with the company for the last six months and helping develop that package for our sites. We wound up with four sites, we started with 11, and we wound up, as we worked through, four sites that are actually listed on their site selection program. And it's, it gives us an opportunity to advertise those sites on a national basis and rail specific. And again, three of the sites are in Gaston. One of the sites is in Atala. And we, of all the counties within their system, we were the only county that had four sites listed. Most of them had two or less. So it's just a real opportunity. It's one of those things we kind of do behind the scenes that you don't have an opportunity to see in terms of promotion. And what it cost us was our time out of pocket working with the guys at Omni Trax, who were great to work with as well.
All right, well, thank you. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilman Worthy?
Was the mega site out there that's in the county, is that the one you're saying is calling Atala, or is that a different one?
Councilman Worthy, that'd be in Wal County.
Okay, okay. That's what, that's what I meant.
The mega site is actually served by Norfolk Southern, which is a mainline tier-one rail service. So this was a separate rail service that we, we have worked, as a follow-up to that, we have worked with Norfolk Southern and the county to help secure revenue from Norfolk Southern for their development out there, and we've worked with them to help secure development from Alabama Power out there, grow it from the power company. So we have, while it's not been our project, we have been very supportive and worked diligently with the county commission to help develop the mega site as well.
Yeah, I knew that, but I just wanted to get you on the road.
You ought to say, you ought to say, "I knew it."
No, 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 no. I wanted to let the people know that we are helping, that's the matter.
It's most of, most of the sites, if you look at it, Norfolk Southern runs basically north-south, and Omni Trax runs, and while it's a little south, it's basically west-to-east. And so that's, if you look at those cross lines, one of the things that's real interesting, and I, a sideline, but there was, there was a track that came out of Atala that came to Gaston, and I could not figure out for the life of me how that track worked or what serviced that track and what it actually was. And in this process, I figured that out. It was the Norfolk Southern spur that actually served the old steel plant. And so you had Omni Trax running right, and they run parallel with each other. I don't know if you've ever seen that or not, but it's right coming out of downtown Atala. They run parallel. One's Norfolk Southern line, and the other's Omni Trax. And at the steel plant, Norfolk Southern stops, and Omni Trax keeps going. And I, you know, I've lived here all my life. I said, "What's the difference?" And so they explained that to me.
Thank you, thanks.
Madam President, I want to echo and agree with my fellow councilmen, Councilman Worthy, that the IDA does work with all entities in the county, plus the county. I know David could share many stories. One is the Cook Foods Plan, a $55 million investment that's taking place in Atala. And so I concur with Councilman Worthy that, you know, the IDA office works with the county, works with the other municipalities in Edgewall County for the common good of everybody. You know, rising tide does lift all ships. And David, thanks for what you do. And, you know, I know there's a lot of work behind the scenes that none of us ever get to see, that some of it bears fruit, and sometimes it doesn't. You know, you just, you just never know what's gonna, how things will work out. But just like this deal that you're bringing today, everything doesn't always come in a real nice package at the right time, at the right place. You know, you're sitting back, and things happen, you get a call. And so sometimes you do have to be fluid, and sometimes we do have to react to what's given to us. And so I think this council's doing that today, and I think we're doing it transparently, and I think we're doing it correctly. And hats off to this company for locating in Gaston in 2018, and congratulations on their expansion. You know, it's a good thing, it's kind of a good thing, bad thing. It's good to hear that they can't fill their orders. That means they have more than they can handle, but they're reacting to it, and they're going to build up to it, which means new jobs and new employees that'll be working in our city. And so that's all, it's all good, and all in a good day's work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does any council members have any further questions or any comments? If not, we'll take this break, and we'll come back at 11 o'clock to start our council meeting. It is October the 12th. It's our 11 o'clock council meeting, and it's good morning again. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and also can be viewed later on Comcast, Channel 99, AT&amp;T Universe, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
I'm here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a forum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation.
Let us pray. My strength is heavenly, Father. We thank the day you gave us God. We thank you, Lord, for the rain you gave us God, and thank you for the sunshine you gave us, God. Please, God, we ask you to be with the city council today. God, let everything be done for your will, God. We just love you. We thank you, God, for everything. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I would like to begin this meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency Director, Ms. Deborah Gaither.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we have some good news to share today. Our numbers, our positivity rates, everything are down. So let me give you the good news. Our positivity rate is at 13.4%. So that is much better than almost four weeks ago when we were seeing 30-something percent. So we're glad to see that. We thank everybody for doing all they can to get those numbers down. The new cases this week were a total of 94, and that gives our daily average of being 13.43. So 13 and a half people almost are being diagnosed with COVID every day right now in Edgewall County. We're still at a current level of community transition as high. So we still aren't out of the woods, but the numbers are just so much better. I hate to report that in the last 14 days, we've had three more deaths in Edgewall County. So that's a number that we're going to have to continue to watch. And we wanted just to remind everybody, hearing good news doesn't mean we stop what we're doing. We get to feeling a little safe. I did it the other day and found myself, I just walked right into a store, and I went, "Oh, didn't get my mask." But it's because we began to hear the good news that we began to slack off. It's flu season also, right around the corner, November through March. So get your flu vaccine. We had a really good flu season last year because we were wearing masks and social distancing and washing hands. So, you know, let's continue to do that, and that might help our flu season. Our Vaccinate Gaston information this week is we've had 88 additional vaccines. That's either a second dose or a Johnson &amp; Johnson dose. That brings the total so far up to 1,957. So that's really a good number. The, I believe this is such a success and would encourage other municipalities to do it. The, between now and the 15th, you can either get your second dose or get your Johnson &amp; Johnson dose. There are two locations that have Johnson &amp; Johnson dose, and that is Corporate Pharmacy Services at 319 Broad Street. Just call them and make an appointment. And then also, the Edgewall County Health Department now has Johnson &amp; Johnson doses. So those are two locations between now and the 15th. You can still get your vaccine of Johnson &amp; Johnson and be eligible for the incentive. The incentive payout dates are two left. Tomorrow, the 13th, and Friday, the 15th. Those are both from 1:00 to 4:00 on the second floor. So we encourage everybody, if you're planning on receiving the incentive, you have two more days. Someone did ask me, "Well, can I get a shot on Friday and still get what I need to get the incentive?" Yes, if you get the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and you can do all your paperwork and get to City Hall, I'd say by 3:00 to make sure you're in that line to finish by 4:00. Then on the 19th, and Ms. Ross, if you're on, correct me if I make a mistake, misstatement here, but will be the drawing for the four $5,000 winners of the Vaccinate Gaston incentive. So four people will receive $5,000. And I think that's amazing that we got to that goal and did it so quickly. Does anyone else, anyone have any questions?
I guess, Deborah, this may not be a question for you, but just a question in general. I want to make sure that we're adequately staffed to handle the administrative work associated with processing these payments and such. Are we good there?
Ms. Ross, or Mr. Payne, if you're on, could one of you speak to the staffing for the payout incentive line? I do know they've been having at least three people at the window when it's busy, some of those being Ms. Ross, or Mr. Payne, and Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall may have more information on that also. But I'll pass that along and make sure that they have what they need. Any of our staff are willing to go and assist where needed to.
Hi, Deborah?
Yes.
I'm on the line. Do you want me to speak?
Yes.
So a number of things. First of all, I'm almost 100% confident that we will have six drawings instead of four. Through Friday, we were at 1,461. So, and we have tomorrow, and Friday will be our last day for the payout. So we definitely will be over the 1,500 mark, which will mean that there will be six drawings, which there again, I think is very exciting. As far as the program, we've been doing the payouts on every Wednesday and Friday from 11:00 to 4:00. And we did, Deborah, to answer your question, we did hire an outside person to work for those six hours helping us with the program, and she's done a really good job. But other than that, myself and Carrie and Nick have been in there working as well. I've been in there probably a lesser time than anybody, but Nick and Carrie have done a real good job helping with the program. We've had to verify addresses, and so they've been in there. We've had the program set up through planning to make sure that the people were in the city limits of Gaston. And actually, to be honest with you, we've had a lot, a lot of people, probably hundreds of people, that we have turned away that did not qualify for the program. And a large portion of them, because they did not live in the city limits of Gaston. They were from Rainbow City, Hoots Bluff, out in the county, wherever.
Well, Lisa, that's a great update. And I've Well, Lisa, that's a great update, and I, I appreciate that. That's really the, the, definitely the information I was looking for. Uh, the only other thing I will offer up is on top of it, on top of the staffing, to make sure that we're able to comfortably manage the administrative, uh, issues, uh, is to make sure you guys are protected. Uh, make sure that there's ample masks, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, uh, Plexiglas dividers, any, anything that you need, uh, you know, and, and I know you guys are already looking into that, but, but, but again, let's just make sure that everybody's safe as you're being asked to interface at a higher level with the public.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Gaither?
Yes.
Would you please repeat the positivity rate for Etowah County?
Yes, let me look at that. A positivity rate for this week is 13.4%.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Gaither, for your update.
I got booed at all.
Uh, at this time, we'll have a update from fire, from our fire chief, uh, Reed.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, all.
Good morning. Good morning.
We continue to have good news. We've had eight PUIs in the previous week, which is just statistically flat and about that. So far in this week, we've had zero. So hoping it holds true. No personnel with COVID, no exposures, no family member out. I did run a, uh, analysis on our data this morning on the computer to see where we are compared to this point last year. Last year, we ran 6,106 calls. Up until this point, we've run 6,756. That's a 10.65% increase from this time last year. So not only is the COVID, uh, problem, is that giving us an increased run, we're just having more calls, period, as people are using our EMS service, our primary medical provider, which we don't encourage people to do, but they are doing it because they don't want to go to the doctor and they'll hold off and then call us. Uh, 60%, uh, 66% of our calls are medical, 34% are fire and other. And this is just slightly different from last year. Last year, 67% of our calls were medical. So, but as our call volume increases, and I, I look for it to continue to increase for the rest of the year, even without COVID, I just want to let y'all know where we stand, and we are prepared for another surge this fall that I hope doesn't come, but we're ready.
Any questions to the fire chief?
Thank you all.
Okay. We will continue with our agenda. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that's held on October the 5th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Second.
Who did the, okay, who was the second?
Councilwoman Worthy.
Worthy, I say the hand. Thank you. Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
Right, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October 1 through the 7th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And, uh, Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right, do we have any proclamations? Hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, unfinished business, and we have none today. Uh, we have some resolutions. We have our first item would be authorizing participation in the senior nutrition program and grant, and this, uh, continues sponsorship of the senior nutrition program for the fiscal year 2022 at Carver and Elliott Community Centers. It authorized grant acceptance through the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission Area Agency on Aging. The amount is 115,513 dollars, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, item 11, is a resolution authorizing agreement to purchase property from the Bellevue Associates LLC, and this relates to proposed improvement at the intersection of George Wallace Drive and East Chestnut Street, and the amount is 23,500, uh, dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution, uh, authorizing, uh, member memorandum of understanding with the Central Alabama Crime Stoppers Program, and this is to facilitate communication with citizens to solve crimes, and the amount is $10,000 per year for three years. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Uh, item 13, resolution is authorize an agreement with the Gadsden City Board of Education. Uh, this is for the after-school tutoring program for children not covered by CARES funding and the Myon Program, Reading Program, and this amount is 182,962 dollars, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Uh, next, uh, resolution, item 14, is authorize an agreement with the fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant CARES Act. This is sub, uh, recipients, and this is related to funding awarded to the city through HUD in the amount of 201, $249, $201,249 to be used to repair, prevent, and respond to COVID. It authorize agreement with the following agencies, Manor, Way of the Cross Ministries, the Love Center Homeless Shelter, the Catholic Center of Concern, and the Salvation Army for $30,000 each, $30,000 each. Uh, and the United Way for $51,249. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading here. This is an ordinance that's amending the fiscal year 2020, uh, action plan and the budget for the HUD Community Development Block Grant and amending the fiscal year 2020 Journal Fund budget to reallocate prior year's CDBG funds to 2020 CDBG street improvements. Uh, this ordinance transfer funds from the CDBG budget of 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, adding 600,000 to 2020 street improvements, making the total of 1,001,000. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Uh, department reports, uh, is Ms., is Ms. Ross are able to get back on? She was knocked off. I just wanted her to address, uh, the, uh, vaccinate Gadsden, um, just announce again about the drawings for next week.
I don't see her back in the meeting, Dr. Tolls.
Well, just, uh, just, uh, just an update, I, I believe in, in speaking with her, the drawing, and she was saying it would be, I know last week it was gonna be four drawings, and she said this week it will be six drawings, and I believe one of the things that they were doing is to get some outside sources to come in and do the drawing so that, uh, none of us will be a part of, a part of that drawing, but it'll take place during council meeting, uh, for the drawing, which will be October the 19th.
Um, excuse me, councilwoman, this is Deborah, and I do have the names of those individuals that will be doing the drawings, if you'd like.
Okay, if you would give that to us, please.
Yes, um, it's Anna Ruth, uh, Moffett, Ruth Moffett from the United Way, and Mary Gomillion of the Alabama Department of Public Health, who's the Northeastern Region, uh, representative. So the two of them will be there on the 19th.
All right, to do the drawing, and, uh, um, hadn't been fully developed, but there will be, uh, not a meeting, but, um, recognition in the chamber later on, in the chamber, uh, later on, of those who were, uh, winners of the drawing. So we look forward to that. That's gonna be, to me, an exciting time. Uh, all I can say too bad, my name's not in the drawing for $5,000, that, that's a good incentive, and we just encourage others to, uh, get vaccinated. Sad that we had to do this, but it's a good thing because a lot of people are being vaccinated. So I think it's a good program. It's going off well, and we continuously, and hopefully after this, that it can continuously to go on. Uh, we can do that, you know, using the funds that we have to do it. That's what the COVID funds are for. Uh, if nothing else, then we'll have, uh, remarks by the council. Uh, Councilman Back, do you have any comments this morning?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, just want to, uh, mention that, uh, I'm going to have a, uh, neighborhood watch meeting at Yer Brown Elementary School Lunchroom this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM, and encourage everybody that attends, please wear a mask. Uh, there's been, uh, the reason for the meeting is an unfortunate incident that it occur, has occurred at the Coin Laundry on Rainbow Drive. That particular location is not in the city limits, but it, of course, is right across the street from, uh, Clubview and, uh, immediate neighborhood there. So there's been a lot of discussion concerning that incident, and so the purpose of the meeting is to kind of clear the air, to make sure that everybody knows what has happened and what is going on, and actions being taken by the Gadsden Police Department and the City of Gadsden. So, uh, 6 o'clock at Yer Brown Elementary in the lunchroom, and, uh, the corporate people will be there to explain and to answer any, any questions. And, uh, that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Williams?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
All right. Uh, Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, those of you who were watching the Public Safety Committee meeting this morning, uh, had to be canceled, uh, based on further information of a legal ma- matter that came in. So we will be having that at a later date. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Nothing, Madam President.
Uh, Council, Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Uh, I don't know, I didn't, uh, see, is the mirror on? Mr. Rogers, is the mirror on?
No, ma'am, he's not.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned for next week.